Hope this meeting of Ashland Board of Commissioners, if you please stand for invocation and pledge of flag.
Let us pray. Lord, we are most thankful for our city today and the direction we're going. We're thankful for the many accomplishments that we've experienced and the ongoing positive improvements that we're going to see in the near future and for generations to come. We once again ask you for your wisdom and guidance on this Board of Mayor and Commissioners as we continue to strive to make the right city and its people. Bless our city manager, our staff and employees, and our citizens. Bless those in attendance today and be with us throughout this afternoon in Christ's name. Amen.
I'd normally give the pledge, but I have a former student here today who is a true patriot and one of the most tireless workers that I've ever seen on behalf of veterans. Mike Wertz, I'll have you do the pledge for us.
Let us stand and salute and respect the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike. Motion to receive and file the agenda.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Pose like sign. Receive and file the minutes of our call meeting on June 6, 2019, and our regular meeting of June 27, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Pose like sign. Hearing reports, Commissioners?
Welcome to our new meeting today. It's been a while since June 27. We usually have one meeting in July and this is it. It, uh, we've had a lot, we've experienced a lot of good things in the month of July. The opening of the Delta Marriott, a good summer motion, the arrival of the statues, just to name a few. And Mr. Corbett's back. I've already been scolded once by Mr. Corbett for wearing short pants in the building. I'm not professional enough, so anyway, but I'm glad to see Mr. Corbett back. And, uh, today on our agenda, we have a long-awaited opportunity to offer curbside recycling. I'd like to mention that. It's been a 12-year-plus in the making with various curves in the road. And I've logged the steps to this point and there's been many. And I want to thank Nick Rupert and now your, uh, your, uh, Brian Waters is here representing Rumpke. And, uh, I want to hand it over to the city manager for some explanation right now.
Uh, what you're going to see on the consent agenda today, Commissioner Mayors, is, uh, a consent item to accept the bid from Rumpke. The wave tops on this, if you will, is that Rumpke has offered a, um, a bid that would do curbside recycling for up to 850 citizens at $7.75 a month. The bid includes, um, parameters that would increase it by 3% in years two and three, which would make it $7.90, $0.98 in year two and $8.22 per month in year three. Uh, they'd be responsible for all the billing on this. And, uh, there's also a $20 per container delivery fee. All this bid is doing today is allowing Rumpke to go out to advertise and gauge the interest of the, uh, citizens to see if there's 850 people that are interested or above that are interested in doing this. They will come back with a number. We'll verify the citizenship of the people in the city limits. At that point, we'll come back to the board for further decisions if we move forward with the contract.
That's all I have.
Pretty, pretty brief explanation. Anyone else?
Uh, just, uh, a note, and only because I haven't gotten to talk to you guys. Uh, just so you're aware, I inserted myself into the Comprehensive Planning Committee the other day. Uh, just because I'm interested in that and want to be part of that. And I was really pleased.
And here.
I'm sorry. I don't have a microphone in front of me. You want me to start again? Um, I entered, uh, um, inserted myself, not at invitation, to, um, the Comprehensive Planning Committee meeting the other day. Um, just because that's of great interest to me and I just want to say I was very pleased with the committee that has been put together through, uh, Community Economic Development to start on this, um, review of our plan and update. Um, some of the people who are on the committee were, are in the room today and it really was a good conversation about the direction that we're headed and where we intend to get to, so.
Yeah, well, I appreciate you doing that on your own, uh, without me appointing you for that.
No, no, I wasn't appointed at all. I just said, "Hey, can I come to this meeting?"
Well, those of you who are in here that are on that, please know that that's a significant committee for us. And, uh, far-reaching, uh, long-range, we follow, we follow what you put together. And, uh, that, that's why it's, the, the people that are on there are pretty important in our community, cross-section, and to give a lot of viewpoints and ideas of what direction we should be going in certain areas of city government, so.
The way that that's going to operate, there'll be a few committee meetings, there'll be several public, um, participation portions of the comprehensive plan because obviously, public, um, input is of utmost importance about the direction of the city and the plan, so we'll be putting that information out, I'm sure.
Who's on the committee?
Oh, Lord. There was, let's see, Mike's on there, um, Michelle's on there for the, from the bus system. We had, uh, Planning Commission representative, Code Enforcement representative, um, Park Board representative.
This committee is not the Planning Commission that, because I was actually a decade ago.
On the original one?
Yeah.
It's the task force for the comprehensive plan. In addition to everybody that the Commissioner mentioned, there's also, uh, Community Representative Sylvia Morrison's on there, Josh Blanton's on there, Blake Gillum is on there, Dr. Boykin, a couple of ministers that I've, their names have slipped me. A very diverse group of people.
Desmond Barrett is the Director of Community Kitchen. He's on there. Um, Norma Meek, it was, it was a really good, she's from Parks Board. You know, Blake Gillum is planning or zoning or something, planning.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it was a pretty, it was a pretty comprehensive group. And like I said, I just ambushed them.
Thank you. I'm glad you did. Glad you're on there. Mr. Perkins?
Nope.
Okay. Good for you. Okay, um, Mayor?
A couple items, Mayor, thank you. I did want to echo what the Commissioner said on the comprehensive plan. In addition to everybody that is represented, just a really high level of energy there. That was something, uh, that the folks that we contracted with said they, they felt really good about the energy. They had to try to control the discussions because there was just so much energy wanting to discuss, discuss things down in a rabbit hole, uh, which was positive. Also, uh, you all have in front of you, and I've got on the board if we need to, uh, there's a read-ahead package for the wastewater treatment plant effort. Uh, incredibly dramatic, significant event that's going to be coming up for the city. You're going to see that in new business as a proposed ordinance. Uh, Mr. Snieve is here from Strand, so we welcome you and, uh, welcome back into Ashland. It's always good to see you. Um, I did have a couple of updates that I wanted to provide today. Uh, one, Commissioner Perkins and Clark had asked me to cover, uh, the capital projects because we've not had a capital project meeting in a while. But I do want to start off with something, uh, on the whole, whole internet network system. Uh, and if you'll, if you'll remember, this was unfortunately referred to as the phone system upgrade and I probably led the charts on that, uh, misrepresentation of that. But just a reminder of what this is. Uh, fiber optic connections to the, the billings you see there, complete data security over network and phone lines. We had not had this, uh, to the level and to the degree that we needed it. Uh, we have recently been, uh, targets of phishing attempts and we're much better capable to deal with that now. Uh, it is unified and expandable. Before, we had a hodgepodge of different systems, different directors would buy different types of servers, et cetera, and they were not unified at all. When you look at the hardware, about 180 phones, three servers, firewall boxes, switches, wireless transmitters, and then the software, we've got the action directory and the Maraca Cloud software. We have on the phone tree, which is something that sounds pretty simple, but when you actually step through that and you pick up the phone and you go through to dial one, to dial two, and making sure that it makes sense and is logical, we think we've got a really good product on that right now. Uh, phone training is ongoing. You'll see a picture of the phone in a second to understand why. Uh, we have run into a, um, a little bit of a challenge right now and that's getting our numbers ported over from Windstream. So that has taken a lot more time than we would have thought. We're trying to do two or three test numbers at this time. Tom, are you out there? How many are we trying to do?
I have three numbers.
Three test, three port-over test numbers and it's taken us weeks to get done. Um, but what we've got left, left to do is the systematic porting over of all the phones. The last phones that we are going to do is going to be our customer service and billing, which is, is of course, the heart of the, the biggest challenge that we've had with phone systems. But that's the one that's going to be the most crucial that we have it right. Just wanted to show you, uh, that's an example of what a Cisco phone looks like. A couple of the phone and domain servers, firewall switches, and then, like I said, numerous wireless transmitters. Uh, do you have any questions, Mayor Commissioners? As soon as, uh, as soon as we get into a, in my vernacular, battle rhythm on the phones porting over, we'll be able to have, I'll be able to estimate a date that says this is when we think we're going to be fully transferred over. Moving, if there's no questions, I'll move into the capital projects update and I'll try to hit these as briefly as possible. First is the 12th and 13th Street streetscape. Hopefully, you all have seen that in the community. Uh, that's the streetscaping that's going on, uh, between, uh, 12th and 13th Street, right off the bridge. Uh, concrete began on the corners of 12th and Winchester this week. Painting and installing of acorn fixtures by our staff is in progress. All street lights are expected to be functioning by next week. And we're also working on drawing to get the railing quotes. Uh, there, the, there's going to be a sign at the 12th Street Bridge entrance, which is a separate, separate project that we're working on. And I've got pictures of that if you all want to see that today. But in order, we have, Cosby's going to do the base for us on that. And we expect, uh, the retaining wall that the sign will be done in September. The next, uh, update I want to give you is on 29th Street. This is a CSO project that we did last year. Uh, the last things that we had hanging on there, there were 41 identified spots, uh, for concrete cracks. Thirty-six of those have been repaired. Uh, we expect the other five to be done by the 1st of August. And we'll go back and then make sure that our punch list is entirely done. Water filter underdrains at the water treatment plant. You're going to see an agenda item today to, uh, approve the purchase for approximately $98,000. This is to do the all threads, uh, to secure the, uh, underdrains and the new IMS Cap 200 filters. Uh, US 23 water lines, if you noticed, the, the road from Catletsburg, actually, I think from the interstate all the way into Ashland was paved except for a portion on US 23. Um, coming into Ashland, the reason that was not, for the community that doesn't know, the reason that wasn't paved is because after coordination with the state, uh, they realized we were doing a water line, we're banding in an eight-inch line that's under Highway 23 to a 12-inch, a newer 12-inch that's underneath the sidewalk. And the right of way also making some fire hydrant replacements. That work is ongoing. We expect it to be done in October. The whole paving and everything to be done in October. Uh, wastewater treatment plant I've already mentioned. Uh, we're looking at the RCA, uh, on today for, on today's agenda for preliminary engineering. SCADA Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition at the Water Treatment Plant and Instrumentation. GRW is currently completing the design. We expect to advertise this in August and it'll take about 18 months for that project to be complete. Summit Tank, which was the, uh, cleaning and recoding of that tank, similar to what we did to Catletsburg Tank last year, is currently on hold. Uh, we have a non-compliant contractor and we're currently pursuing the contractor's bid bond. Mill Street Facility, uh, the last thing that needs to be completed there is concrete around the facility, sidewalks and entrances into the building. Uh, we're continuing to work on some warranty issues with that product. And then the last, uh, last topic area is Central Park Improvements. The Central Park Tot Lot, which you all approved, Mayor Commissioners, uh, as part of, um, last year's budget discussions. Um, the Tot Lot's going to be closed on the 1st of August. Park employees will begin deconstructing and removing the existing equipment. We expect the new equipment to be delivered on the week, uh, around the week of the 19th of August and the playground vendor will then construct the new playgrounds. Uh, we expect the park to be open, uh, in September, that portion of the, uh, park. And these other two aren't, they're not capital projects, but just for information for you all. The pickleball tennis court lighting, they're installed and working. Uh, the installation crews are working on tweaking the lighting angles. And then the splash pad has been resurfaced, looks great. However, we had some problems that existed with the fountain system prior and we had to order a new ball, uh, valve to install on that. So I think that covered everything. Is there anything that you all remember that I might have not covered?
So how many miles of waterline replacement did we complete in, in this past fiscal year?
I'd have to get that answer for it. I don't know if it's off the top of my head.
And then how, do we have, you have an idea of what you've got planned as far as for this next budget year? How many miles?
We do. Uh, I don't have the miles. What, so just as a reminder, we're, we're getting a nine miles, 53,000 feet of engineering from, uh, LJB Engineering. And what we're trying to determine right now is what we can afford underneath the million-dollar budget item, how much we're going to contract out, how much we can do with our crews. Um, and just for the community to know, uh, at the top of that list is a back line to support if and when Highway 23 breaks again, it impacts 5,000 to 7,000 customers in the city. Our focus right now is doing a back-channel feed, uh, down Simpson and up Belmont that would greatly reduce the number of people that are impacted by that. Uh, Mr. Hall, uh, Water Distribution is going through right now, trying to figure out what that's going to look like.
Great.
Mayor, I want to get on the record here today of, of, of a time, timeline on going to, uh, advertise for bids for the 16th Street Plaza. And my hope is that right after Pogue Landing Days, that maybe we would have the contractor ready to go. That's going to be a monumental development and I don't want it, I don't want it to slip by us.
Uh, we're tracking that, yes?
I know you're working on it. I just want to get it out there in the minutes and, uh, some kind of timeframe of that effect. Okay. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay. At this point in our meeting is public participation. If you have an item not listed on the agenda you'd like to bring before the board, uh, would ask you to give your name and address and hold your comments to five minutes or less. Mike, come on up.
Mike Burris, Black Panther resident of Ashland, United States Army veteran. I live at 801 East Street.
Get, get on the mic there. He'd like to hear that US Army veteran.
Yes, sir, or United States Army veteran.
Oh.
Oh, yeah. Okay. As you know, I am an AMVET, a life member of the AMVETS and I'm a state officer with the AMVETS. I was in Louisville, my wife and I were in Louisville a couple of weeks ago to Convention Corporation meeting. I ran across this stuff about homeless veterans. About two weeks ago, before we went, about, about almost a month, we seen a guy holding a sign up just like this, like, like that, saying homeless veteran. On the, on these pamphlets that has numbers, numbers, and you would not believe the numbers of how many homeless veterans they are in the United States. Right now, it's 22,000 homeless veterans. To me, that is unacceptable for what, what our state can do and what our, our government can do. So if you all's permission, I want to hand these out to you all and leave them with the police department. That way, they know they have these if they ever, ever run into a situation like this.
Sure.
Thank you.
Glad to have them.
Whoops.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike. Thanks for your service. Thank you very much, Mr. Wertz. Anyone else, select them up.
Hello, I'm Suzanne Griffith. I actually live in Westwood, but the topic I'm going to talk about today, um, really affects us all. It's about blight and land banks, but I was going to bring you guys up a notebook if that would be okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Suzanne.
You're welcome.
Oh, yeah.
Boss, you better believe it, you know me.
Bless your heart.
You've been a great man to work for and a nice man to help. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
Well, I want to, let me put on my timer here because I sure don't want to go over. I'm going to move that one bit. Okay. Okay. I'm Suzanne Griffith. I live at 535 Houston Avenue in Westwood. Today, what I want to talk about is land banks. I'm a retired Boyd County teacher and luckily, I work over in Chesapeake right now where they have a land bank. And, um, the Lawrence County Land Bank is booming. They have $4.3 million. They're rocking it. They have got that from the hardest-hit funds and they've taken down 200 properties. And that is money that they didn't have to spend out of their own budget. So that's why I'm so interested in it because in Westwood, we have a number of properties that need to come down. I've also talked to Alicia Brown. She says there's probably 100 in the county. I saw a while back, Ashland had 75, so I think that'd be easy to come up with 200 real quick if we all think about it. But, um, I went and looked at the state legislation, so if you'll open up your notebook here where the pink tab is, we do, we, this is legal in Kentucky. Um, right now, we only have one and that is in Louisville. And I really feel like one of the reasons before is because where it says county that circled, it did say county with a first-class city. Well, that's nice and everything, but for a while, there was one and that was Jefferson County and they do have a, a land bank. But right now, you know, obviously, it says that a city could do one and that would be great and I would sure like that. But, um, we believe a lot of our county too that needs to be cleaned up as well. Of course, you guys know that and you all see that, I'm sure. But if you go on down here, if the purpose of the land bank would be to facilitate public purpose, uh, returning property that is non-revenue generating, non-tax-producing status to effective utilization, including but not limited to providing housing, which talking about, um, what he just talked about. My sister, she's a mayor in Ohio and they use their land bank to get properties for homeless veterans. It's been very successful through the Habitat of Humanity, so I just wanted to put that in real quick. Um, but what they do is they turn these properties over into being of, of effective properties once again. Um, you know, there's some, there's some boards that have to be in with that and all that kind of stuff. You have to have a board that's, you have to have somebody from the governor, from the schools, from the city and all this type of thing, but I see a progressive bunch here. I think our fiscal court's progressive and I can tell you one thing, Westwood is jumping on board, so. Um, if we go on over to the red part, it talks about, um, about Louisville's land, land bank and they've had it for 30 years. Now, they've had a lot of issues with that that they've worked through. And I will tell you that if we were to look at Louisville's, I think it would be a good example for us to, to start from. I think if you look at Lawrence County, Ohio's, oh my goodness, it's been amazing. Between the land bank and the point, I'm telling you, I'm, I'm concerned for us because they've got it going on over there. Now, I'm going quick because I only have a little bit of time. If you go on over to the yellow part, it says problems in our area. I've already discussed that a little bit, but, um, obviously, Westwood, we're, we're trying to get some homes down. What are we running into is a bunch of red tape and a bunch of, um, you know, other issues with money. We just had two taken down. Those were $7,500 each. But it was a big win for our community because those two houses were being used for drugs and we're tired of it. I'm sure you guys are tired of it too. But I went ahead and put in a few other pictures, um, of some other houses in Westwood that need to come down. Um, like I said, one's right across from our elementary school. And that's why this, this blight issue, it's not only here, it's, it's only in our county. It's in Clota County, it's in Graham County, it's everywhere all over Kentucky. And what I have found is other states are dealing with the blight through land banks and we go, we are so far behind, guys. We are, oh my goodness, we are light-years away from Ohio. Now, if you keep on going through here, I know I'm going fast and you're just going to have to forgive me a little bit, yes?
Ms. Griffith, you can slow down a little bit.
Okay, sorry. I'm like, I only have five minutes. It was 4:17.
That's mostly, uh, that's mostly for people really up there arguing about something.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gilmore.
I mean, let's, let's face it. That's why it's in there.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. I'll send down.
When you have, when you have something this monumental to areas and we're one of them, yeah, I need you to slow down.
Okay. And thank you so much. Uh, this, obviously, this issue is very dear to my heart because I see the progress going on over there. Houses are going down, the properties are being sold and new houses are going up and those houses are going right back on the tax rolls, which is right where all our like properties are right on the tax rolls. Okay, but Lawrence County, we're going to talk about that win. This orange part right here. I'm sorry. Do you need one, sir?
Yeah, please.
I can share it for right now.
All right.
They got the $4.3 million from the hardest-hit funds. Now, Ohio got $600 million in hardest-hit funds because kind of based on population. Kentucky got 200 million. Now, if the hardest-hit funds were allowed to address blight, unfortunately, Kentucky did not do that. They put it all into mortgage relief, which is wonderful, but that mortgage relief maybe went to four counties and we sure weren't one of them. Um, so we didn't, now, it does go for our limit too, so we did get some money from there. But basically, on the hardest-hit funds, I feel like we were left out. So if you go right here to this little green thing right here, where it says the hardest, Ohio uses hardest-hit funds. It says, "The Neighborhood Initiative Program Will Fund Strategically Targeted Residential Demolition." And that's why in Lawrence County, why they're taking their houses down because they got their money for demolition. And, um, they're really cleaning it up. If you go over to Ironton today and go through some of those neighborhoods, they're looking a lot better. I'm very impressed. But they were able to do this where I'm trying to get in touch with the people from Kentucky that do our hardest-hit funds. So far, I've been stoned. Maybe you guys have way more power than me because they're using all their money from mortgages. I want them to do an amendment for blight. And where they can start, right here, as far as I'm concerned. So, um, the last I looked, 84% of the money was used. I'm thinking that's 16%. Let's, let's see what else that we can do with it, is, is my point on that. Another way that law the states got the money years ago, they did the mortgage, um, they sued the mortgage companies and things. Well, they would get the, the states would get these big, um, you know, settlements back or whatever and a lot of that money. But if you look at, I went ahead and talked more about the filing there, and then for your all's midnight reading, I added the land banks and land banking, the second edition. Every source that I looked at, and I have read so much on this, would talk about this one particular source, how they, how they formed it, how they did it, and it was over and over again, this source was used, just state after state, county after county after county. So I thought, if everybody else is using it, then we should, too. Now, I had went ahead and presented to the Boyd County Fiscal Court. I would like to go on with the Catlicks, too, but like I said, I just want to raise awareness of this. I think it's not only a local issue, but a state issue, and we're a progressive bunch right here. I feel like the Ashland City Commission is very progressive. I think we have a very progressive Boyd County Fiscal Court right now, and a good time to strike while the iron's hot, as they say. But thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate very much your zealous attitude towards all this. We, on a small scale, you know, under Mr. Pullman, his people, we've been trying to attack those 75 homes, and that are a real detriment to people next door in the neighborhood.
Absolutely, they are.
And as we say up here, and we always have to throw in the caveat, which it's the way it is and the way it ought to be, it's America.
Right.
And we would love to go in and very quickly shove these homes over, and, you know, there are several ways you go from there, either to put the property up for sale, for liens on it, deal with that. But normally, you run into legal problems.
Yes.
Ownership, we have so many absentee owners.
Absolutely, yes.
Heirs, whatever, and they care less. They live far away, the property sets, deteriorates. Everybody around it suffers from it, and it's, it's just a difficult path to take, but we've been doing it, and we, I'm not sure what our number is at this point, but we feel, this commission feels like every time we can shove one over and clean that lot off, everybody wins.
Absolutely. Well, and that's what I think so, too, and that's why I wanted to bring this to your attention. Apparently, the land banks and the way that it's set up in Kentucky has some more legal power about that. I know in Ohio and in West Virginia, they just got it, where they're the first, right of first refusal on the lands, if that makes sense. So they were able to get that, so they were able to get the land banks that were funded by an outside source, were able to get the property seller. And I know that Ohio just has an extremely aggressive laws about all that, and West Virginia's been working on it, and the states that have been worked best, they have the right of first refusal, and they have the big funding to come in. And those are two things that if other people are doing it, and if we're going to be competitive, we're going to have to do it, too, is my, right looking.
I agree, and sometimes you don't, we need to listen to anybody and everybody that brings something up. You've obviously put a whole heck of a lot of work in on this. Of course, you're a school teacher.
I'm a school teacher. I bring the notebooks. Well, I put a lot of work into it because I see the results. And I'm not putting anyone down at all. I'm looking at the issues that our fiscal court is facing of bringing down a few houses in Westwood. My goodness, that's rough. I can't like you all do, but if there's another entity that can help deal with that, and it's legal now in Kentucky, I think it's worth investigating. But I'm also going to talk to Terry Brown Clark, because I want the money for it, too.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
We, I like the money. That's my favorite.
Is there money at the state level?
I don't know. I'm trying to figure this out, but I think it could be an election issue. I think that if other states are doing it and being very successful, then we need to let our people. Now, too, I contacted Andy Beshear's office to see if there was any left. He hasn't contacted me back, of all of the mortgage crisis, because there was a big pot of money in Kentucky about two or three years ago for that. And if there's any money left, I'm going to suggest that we use it for land banks. And if there's any money from the hardest-hit funds, which I'm trying to dig on, I haven't gotten anything back from the state yet, then they can amend our proposal and they can add blight. So there are some ways to get money, but we just have to dig and put some pressure on people, and, you know, and here it mentioned Michigan giving their smaller communities $350,000 to start. Well, $350,000 is sure more than Huntington, which was nothing, and it's a whole lot harder to work on all this stuff with nothing, so.
So what you researched thus far for Kentucky, do you feel like they lent more on the mortgage relief fund as opposed to?
I think that we need to look at, see what, if Andy Beshear has any money left from that, I think we need to look at the hardest-hit funds, and we all pay state taxes. We need some state money in here to help our communities grow, because, Mr. Gilmore, after this, these properties are down and the new ones are up, the state is sure there to get their head out, too, on the taxes, and if they're going to do that, then they should pay some, too. Now, I will say one more thing about land banks, and it's in here in this. After the property is sold for five years, 50% of the taxes, except for the school taxes, go back to the land bank so it can perpetuate over time. But still, that's better than not giving anything. Another thing is these third parties that come in and buy these loans a lot of times have no interest in our community. That's an issue, and I, you know, I'm glad that we have some of that sometimes, but really, sometimes they're killing us, too. And that's my point. I want our community to grow and good things to happen, and this is one tool for that to happen. In fact, they make it very clear in here that that's what this is for, so. Thank you all. It's been wonderful talking.
I don't think it would be a bad idea for you to have a conversation with the Community Economic Development Department, specifically Catherine Upthing, who's the acting planner right now.
Is she in this room?
Just so that you're aware of some of the things that we already have in place and going on and that sort of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Suzanne, if you get her card before you leave, or you hook up here real quick before she leaves.
Okay. I'm going to stay around for the end. I've never been to one of these meetings before. I think it's kind of interesting.
Well, you're such a breath of fresh air, and we appreciate that. While I've heard about land banks, didn't mean much. It wasn't, you know, wasn't on my radar to get into it, and we have staff that are at a level, they could get into this for us, and I'm like you, if you don't go after it, you're certainly not going to get anything.
Well, and that's exactly right, and elections kind of up, and I'm, the issue of blight in eastern Kentucky is I look at the economic map, and I see all red because it's in distress. I just think we can all do this. We're going to have to be more aggressive about clearing up and things. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Yes, sir. Come on up.
I'm a resident of Ashland, have been for 20-some years.
Your name?
My name's Tim Barker. I live on 4905 Williams Avenue.
Thank you.
And my complaint today, which is not a breath of fresh air, but our sewers is backed up where I've lived for the last two years, and, you know, we're all happy we're getting water lines in, but the 23 beside my house on each side looks like a war zone. Either they're putting gas lines in for the last six months by my house. Well, Friday, they put a 24-inch culvert or manhole in, and I tried to find out exactly what tied into it, and I could get no answer. My basement filled up for about a year before I could finally find out. I had water coming in through a line into my basement. I own two lots there. The front is on at 68, 69 foot, lot nine and 10 on Williams Avenue, and I catch all of it right there. As you know, it all runs downhill, as the old saying is. But I'm tired of having to wake up and not even able to flush my toilet. I don't know if any of y'all have had to deal with that ever, but I've worked ironwork. I'm a disabled ironworker. I put 15 years into that, worked as a pipe fitter myself, off and on, for eight years, and I've never seen nothing like it. I can't get an answer out of nobody.
Who was doing, who put the manhole in?
The city.
Yeah. And we put a 24-inch line in there?
Yes. At the base corner of my lot, I've got pictures on my phone, which I don't have time to go into, and y'all don't have the.
Which department did you contact?
Well, I've talked to the city a couple of times, Mr. Eastwood, I believe it is, and he had done tests in my basement back when it was flooded, and now that I've closed it off, I don't really have nothing but rain, water leaves a little bit in there, but then my toilets are still backing up. I have two clean outs in my backyard, and if I pop them open, there water spews out, and that shouldn't be.
Has anybody ever been up there after you called and reported?
They have, and they've tried to give me their pamphlet and said if I cannot prove that it's my problem, or your problem, then we're not going to do nothing about it. I just would like to get a smoke test, a dye test, some type of dang test. I'm a taxpayer. I've lived here and raised kids. I lost one kid here.
We appreciate that. We understand that.
Passed away, and I'd like to live like a normal human being and be able to flush my damn cum out.
And well, you should.
Mr. Barker, Mr. Hall in the back is the director of utilities. He'll give you his contact information, and we'll get on that immediately and see what's been done up to this point.
I will show appreciation. I respect you all, and have a good day.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't know if he knows which one it is. And, Mr. Hall, make sure he gets your card there, and, you know, these kind of complaints, we get a little baffled by them, too, and taking care of each individual resident when they have a situation like this is a paramount issue for us. I mean, you know, we do a lot of big-picture stuff, but the good thing about small-town America is you've got to deal with people, the water problem, the sewer problem, the sidewalks torn up, neighbors a little too loud all the time, and those are significant to us because we try to picture ourselves living in that same house that Mr. Barker lives in, and how long would we want to deal with that? We're sorry about all that time period, Mr. Barker.
God bless you.
We'll get somebody up there.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. A lot of times, if you just, we just make sure we get attention up there, and I don't know, the thing about it, we tell people sometimes, I only know anything but what he just told us, so, but it doesn't sound right. So it could be half of this and half of that, I don't know, but truthfully, this commission is, we're bent on trying to get quick relief to people just in a neighborhood, just in their home. We don't do that, we're not worth a whole lot. We can do all these big projects all the time we want, but if we don't take care of our neighbors and neighborhoods, we're not doing much.
Agreed.
I hate to hear those kind of stories. I'm sure we'll get right on it. Anyone else like to appear before the commission? We thank you all for being here. Old business, item A. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. If I cut across any more information, I'd be glad to play it down to you all.
Thank you, Mike.
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorized and directing the mayor to execute a five-year extension to the Housing Assistance Payments Contract between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Harbor Hill LLP regarding the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Project-Based Assistance Housing Choice Volunteer Program for the Department of Community and Economic Development, adopted by ordinance number 104, series of 2009, and repealing ordinance numbers 55 and 148, series of 2018."
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
I recuse myself.
Oppose, like, sign. Consent agenda.
A resolution to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting, authorizing, and approving the course of action presented by the city manager on the items appearing on the consent agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of City Commissioners of July 25, 2019.
Some move.
Second.
I had one question myself, and it's relative to the recycle. You know, the city will pay a difference of the 775 each below the 850. How far below would we go?
That's the decision point. If that number comes in after they're completed with the survey and it's something below 850, that'll be a decision point for the city. All right, let's say hypothetically, it comes in at 845 confirmed folks that have signed up for it. That can waiver every month as people come in and people go out, but part of the bid that Rumkey provided said that anything below 850, the city would cover that difference per customer.
But there's no requirement right now. By passing this, you're not committing to anything.
That's my question.
If it comes in less than 850, then it will be presented to you to make a decision.
Okay.
Okay, and then the decision-making could take place, let's say, let's say they get 1,000. I hope, I hope they do. And after about six months, they're down to 600 because people didn't care much for it. So now you're down a couple, 250 from the, so is the city liable for that?
You'd have to make a decision at that point in time whether you're going to supplement or whether you're going to terminate the program at that time.
Okay.
Rumkey would not go forward at that time unless the city agreed to supplement.
Rumkey's shaking his head back there.
I got you. Just one other question. Are we going to continue to use our existing?
I want, I think we need to clarify. The contract would be for three years, so if we, if at the point we get a number and we agree to it, then for three years, we, the city, are locked in to cover whatever's below 850.
Okay.
But voting for this today does not put that into place.
All this does is give Rumkey the opportunity to advertise and get the number, so we have some good data for you all to decide.
Okay.
I appreciate all the work that's been done on this, finally whittling it down. Will we continue to operate our recycling center?
That would be another part of the discussion. There's two bids that went out. Alternate bid was for either continuing the drop-off point or getting, doing away with it. Logically, maybe you don't need the drop-off point. We'd still have to reconcile with the people that have paid from out of town, or the folks that are out of the city limits. We'd have to reconcile that, but arguably, you could see where if we did curbside recycling, the need for that drop-off point wouldn't be as high.
Okay. And do I have anything else? On favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like, sign. Item B.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an engineering services agreement between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Strand Associates, Inc., retaining Strand to provide engineering services for the wastewater treatment plan expansion and improvements project in an amount not to exceed $535,990."
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like, sign. Item D.
An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and approving change order number one between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Morris Contracting, Inc., increasing the contract amount by $27,286 regarding the South 29th Street Waterline Replacement Project for the Department of Utilities, Division of Water Distribution.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like, sign. Item E.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a consulting agreement between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Morris Contracting, Inc., increasing the contract amount by $27,286 regarding the South 29th Street Waterline Replacement Project for the Department of Utilities, Division of Water Distribution."
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like, sign. Item E.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a consulting agreement between
lease agreement between the City of Ashland and Gliding Swan Properties LLC regarding the leasing of parking spaces north of the flood wall and west of the Depot property."
Some move.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
I'm a refusal.
Opposed, like sign. Item B.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorized and directing the mayor to execute an engineering services agreement between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Strand Associates, Inc., retaining Strand to provide engineering services for the wastewater treatment plan expansion and improvements project in an amount not to exceed five hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars."
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Item C.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorized and directing Stephen E. Gilmore, Mayor, to execute a contract with Cosby Construction for the Concrete Improvement Program for the City of Ashland Department of Public Services and Utilities Operations, Division of Street Maintenance, in the amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars."
Some move.
Any, any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Item D.
An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorized and approving Change Order Number One between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Morris Contracting, Inc., increasing the contract amount by twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars regarding the South Twenty-Ninth Street Waterline Replacement Project for the Department of Utilities, Division of Water Distribution.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Item E.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorized and directing the mayor to execute a consulting agreement between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and JM Dooley Consulting, LLC, in an amount not to exceed five thousand dollars to provide consulting services regarding data retention policies for the City of Ashland."
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? The data retention...
I can, uh, a little bit more details on this. Policy both at the state and federal, uh, level is evolving on, in regards to what type of data, especially when you're talking about social media, um, text messaging, email, but overall electronic data management. We've got very good procedures in, there's been great laws for what we do with our paper. This continues to evolve. Our city doesn't, right now, have a policy or have taken a good look at it to say, how do we go about this? So, uh, Dooley will come in with their experience, uh, they'll analyze our existing policies and procedures, and they'll come up with recommendations for how we deal with that. For example, on texting, instead of you and I texting between each other, how do we retain that? You and I could delete that. There would be a separate app, for example, there's one thing I've become familiar with that, if we do anything on official business, it would need to be on that, and that way it's retained. That's just one example.
Who determines how many hours that they need? A cap of five thousand? You know, you see these a lot, you figure they're going to be here to the eleventh hour getting five thousand dollars, but is there a, uh, where the, where, where are they from?
We, uh, local. There, we've had, uh, two discussions, Mr. Pullum, with Dooley, or three, uh, myself, CED, uh, Corporation Counsel, I don't want to leave anybody out. As we've tried to design, oh, Mr. Gibbons, thanks, uh, as we've tried to determine what this looks like, we think that that's, this is reasonable to get done, the product that we want, uh, during these, these timeframes and for that amount of money.
So, are we currently not in compliance with the law?
That's hard to say, because you work with the state on this, when we're talking about the cutting edge sort of his, his text messages and things like that, there's been some court cases that have ruled that those are in fact subject to open records requests, but we don't really, right now, have any way to contain them, other, if I got a request for a certain subject matter, all text messages between commissioners and so on, I'd just have to go to you and say, will you look on your phone and see what you can find? That's not a particularly good way to do it. The state has not, is still developing, they tell me, regulations on this. But this company has been very experienced in this, and they were involved, I think they, they wouldn't mind us saying this, with the, with the hospital and some of their major litigation and, and record retentions and, uh, so what they're going to do, hopefully, is make a recommendation to us about how we can do that, so we will be able to retain and recall these types of things.
My, my only thought on that would be, if the state has not set the standard yet, and we go ahead and contract these services, and the standard is different than the, what we've set up by the, by the recommendation from the local company, I, I, I just, I'd worry cart before the horse, if the state will oversee how we should be conforming.
And I understand your concern, but quite frankly, the state's behind the eight ball on this, too, because we've got federal and state court decisions saying, these things are public records, and if you, under the open records statutes, you're required to produce them, and, and right now, we can't.
I think, Commissioner, I think it's an excellent point. It definitely will be a living document. And so, it might be good, let's say we finish this in two months, it may be good for a set amount of time until something hard comes out of the state or the federal that will cause us, just like we do in other policies.
I think the process would be, we would look, if the state comes out with comprehensive regs, we would look at what we have and say, okay, will we meet those or not? And if not, we'd have to...
And we would be further ahead than most.
Than starting at the beginning when they...
Right, than we are right now. And I don't think that we're, I don't think we're probably behind too many communities on this right now.
Right.
And have they worked with other cities or counties developing policy?
Yes.
Okay.
And also, a lot of large private employers.
Okay.
So, they're, they're very experienced.
At two fifty an hour, they should be.
On favor?
That's why the cap.
Yeah. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Item F.
An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorized and directing the mayor to execute a contract with the City of Ashland and Southern Ohio Trenching and Excavating, Inc., to provide labor, equipment, and materials to install filter underdrain anchors at the water treatment plant in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars for the Department of Utilities, Division of Water Production.
Some move.
Second. Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Item G.
Can I make one comment on the mayor?
Yeah.
Uh, that's probably because of the removal of the media on all of these, we're still going to continue to, to work filters three and five to replace the caps, the filters. You're looking probably at a year-long, uh, process to get this done, but this, as we've discussed ad nauseam, I think, is the, makes us feel the most safe about the continued performance of those filters and the underdrains.
It's a must, we agree. Thanks. Item G.
municipal order, the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorized and directing the Finance Department to issue a credit to Sanitation District Number Four in the amount of ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents for inaccurate total suspended solid readings due to equipment malfunction.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Wait.
Yeah.
Have we fixed the equipment?
Yeah, it's not our equipment, it's...
Have they fixed the equipment?
Yes.
Okay.
And just to be clear, this is not money that we have budgeted, this is per our agreement with SD four. Uh, we're allowed to throw one sample out a month, and that's what we've done, so this is, if you will, the right thing to do.
Okay. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Item H.
A reading and adoption of a municipal order entitled, "The Municipal Order of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorized and directing the mayor to execute a donation agreement regarding acceptance by the City of Ashland of a donation of bronze statues known as and depicting Vulcan Venus in Genesis and repealing Municipal Order Number One, 2019."
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor? I'm, I'm sorry.
Tell us about this. Tell us, uh, you've, you've been firsthand.
Yeah, well, uh, I hope be firsthand every day they're down there, but it's such a, this is going to be such a big deal, and there's so much preparation has to be done to put, uh, how many tons each of those statues weigh, and their pilings will be, or pylons, will be put down in the ground, and then, uh, I don't know how much concrete goes in there, but, uh, the pedestals they stand will be ten feet high.
Okay.
And, uh, they'll, they'll, and they'll have hooks on them, where in a, in some kind of a reason, you'd have to do a major repair and take them down, they can be taken off to do whatever. So, um, they're, they're just, they're just something else. So, we, we're thinking that, um, the, the sculptor was in for about a week and, and to kind of check everything out, and we, of course, we went up to where they're stored and checked those out, and they're just magnificent. But, um, probably, uh, with all of the preliminary work has to be done on the riverfront, we're thinking end of September, first of October. We're, that, that, we're thinking that's a reasonable timeframe, as opposed to saying, well, we think we do it in six weeks or whatever.
And where are they going on the riverfront?
In, in the green, the green space there, to the left when you pull down towards the black hole.
Is there enough room for those great big things right there?
Sure are, yeah.
Seems like they'd be squished in there.
No, they're going to be twenty-five, thirty feet apart.
Okay.
Yeah. And, uh, that's, he approved all that, so he says that's the way to do it. And they, they will, uh, they will be the largest, uh, consortium of three sculptors in Kentucky and probably America.
Mm-huh.
And then, Hennes said the other night, and our counsel was able to meet him and, and, and talk with him and all, he really believes in, in the world. Any of those size right together, and we all, not all, but we've traveled and seen sculptors in Europe and, and, uh, other, other continents and all, but you normally see one or a guy on a horseback or whatever, but you rarely would see three, and he's, he's built many of them around the world. Um, and he's, 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 he was headed to the Philippines, uh, right now, he's going to be building a, a hundred-foot statue of Jesus, which you'll be able to enter and, and go up through it. It's amazing what he's going to be doing on that one. That's a big deal. But we're, we're fortunate, and this, this just keeps things moving here.
Thanks.
On the preliminaries. On favor?
Aye.
Uh, mayor? A discussion item, or counsel?
Yeah, the discussion item, I, is a request to maintain the approximately four-hundred-square-foot lighted sign that was erected on the hillside at the end of Florida Street above the midtown shopping center. Uh, just as, as background for you, your ordinance in question says, "The City of Ashland Board of Commissioners may here and decide cases where it is alleged by an application for a sign permit. There is an error, any determination made by the code enforcement officer and the enforcement of the ordinance, and the Board of Commissioners may waive or modify the technical requirements of the ordinance as it determines to be in the best public interest." So essentially, that's what you're being asked to do, is, is to consider, uh, waiving the, uh, requirements and, uh, and in effect overruling the determination of the code enforcement officer.
I never, how, I don't know how I missed it.
I don't either. I have to tell you, I haven't seen it.
It's a, it's an approximately, I'm reading from the, uh, request for commission action, it's approximately four-hundred-square-foot lighted sign that was erected on the hillside at the end of Florida Street above the midtown shopping center. Um, I did, I did see it in the morning, uh, for a couple of days. It says, "Aclifside.com. The applicant is seeking to maintain the lighted sign that was erected, uh, without signing, uh, without maintaining a sign permit. Uh, the purpose of the sign is to advertise a proposed residential development known as Ashland Cliffside, and, uh, Corporation Counsel already talked to zoning, uh, portion of it."
Did we have anybody present to, to speak in favor of the application? Yeah, I think you probably should hear from them.
Come on up.
Good afternoon. My name is Patrick Watson, I'm a fourth-generation Ashland resident. Uh, this development is twenty acres in the center of Ashland. Uh, we initially, I initially relied on an ordinance, I guess that's either outdated, stating that there was not a, either nuisance to another public or another resident in the area or a traffic obstruction. There's only one other house that's remotely close to it, it's, uh, Fourth through Two Florida Street. Uh, the gentlemen that live there support, decide, they have no problem with the sign, they support both that development and the sign. Uh, we certainly were not trying to circumvent any, anybody at the city, we just simply thought that ordinance didn't apply to the private property. Um, does anybody have any questions about it? I mean, uh, we turned the lights on Fourth of July. It was only, it's only a temporary sign, it's been on during the, just only during the evening hours, it goes off in the evening, goes off in the morning, excuse me. The website traffic, it did generate about two hundred hits a day from the website traffic. Uh, it's down to about one a day since we've turned those lights off, so it definitely had a big impact there.
So, you're, you're trying to invest in our city?
That's correct.
Are you going to put the houses on the...
On the, yes, I'm very, correct.
Flat area?
Exactly. There's actually two levels, and this, this sign actually sits at the very top level.
So, if we looked at the Planet Fitness sign that we approved to allow them to have larger lettering, it's right above that?
It is much further above that.
But it's white, but it's...
Correct.
Yes.
Correct. And it's, uh, you can't see it during the daytime. It's only lit, it's only lit up by LED lights at night.
Okay.
But it, yeah, signage would be on anybody's property, you know, it'd be, be like somebody in the neighborhood would decide to stick a sign up in their backyard because they own that yard, but that's just, just for your future reference.
Right, yeah.
It is a significant difference. We'd have real profits around our community if you could put a sign anywhere.
Well, the ordinance is, well, this, the location of the sign is extremely isolated, it's unique, there is no other houses that, that, it's posing a nuisance to, I understand your concern there.
So, do you have ingress off of Florida into that area?
I do.
And are you going to have ingress on the low side or not? Isn't there a road?
There is.
You probably wanted in, didn't you?
There is, exactly, yeah, we actually constructed it.
Is that going to be an entrance, too?
Uh, not at this time. It, it could later. Right now, we're just trying to develop one structure at a time.
If I understand correctly, the property's not yet been subdivided and approved for subdivisions, is that correct?
Uh, it is not. The only thing we've done is, uh, water controls and erected the sign and developed the website.
Obviously, there's a whole lot of work that's going to have to be done on that before you can build or sell anything there.
That's correct. We're, the intention, the sign was only to develop the interest and, and raise the awareness.
Makes sense.
And the, the ordinance that, that's in question, or the provision in question, has a limitation. It has, it is for signs, uh, that announce the entrance to a subdivision and so on. So, we sort of took a leap of faith and treated it as a subdivision for that purpose, but the size still greatly exceeds the size that's allowed for other subdivisions. Now, you can waive that. That's, that's the question presented to you all today, is do you want to waive that?
And we've waived it for Planet Fitness.
But with that...
That, that's, I don't think that's a good analogy, because Planet Fitness went through the process to start with, and it was a business that was opening.
Yeah.
It, it's already, it was already there, you know, Planet Fitness, Planet Fitness was there, and we had said, oh, you can have a bigger sign because you're here.
So, it's, it's a temporary sign?
That's correct, it is a temporary sign.
And, and of course, uh, counsel, your reference there would be, uh, probably a permanent sign entering a subdivision. You think that's the way that reads?
Yeah, well, that, that, it, it's really designed to set limitations for signs on subdivisions that have been platted and approved, and, and actually, this has not been platted and approved, so in reality, you could argue that the ordinance doesn't allow any sign there.
Yeah.
But, uh, you know...
Section four for special sign regulation says, "Real estate sale slash rental political campaign signs no larger than eight square feet in residential zones and one square foot per each five linear feet front of non-residential zones," and then to what Corporation Counsel is going to, permitted signs in residential districts, again, which you, you all have already debated, is not to exceed fifteen square feet.
What, what's your plan, Patrick? Uh, what's your timeframe plan?
The timeframe of the sign is...
No, for, for your getting approval to plaid it out, your...
Oh, we, we, I mean, we'll certainly go through whatever procedures we need to there, but...
Have you initiated that yet?
We have not, we're waiting to see the, the end result of this, this discussion before we see how to proceed next.
If you get interest, if the sign gets enough interest, have you had people, you know, get...
Absolutely, yeah. As I mentioned, I'm sorry, Matt, go ahead.
We have a shortage of, of housing, and obviously, any and all development, we welcome with open arms, and we must do everything we can to, to encourage people to, uh, live in our city. And one of the biggest issues, I think, I've heard from people, is that there's not enough adequate new housing development. I think that goes back to your point with blighted property.
That's where this focus of this development is, and it's 20 acres and it's...
Yeah.
No, I agree with that. I don't know that we want to set the precedent that we put lit massive signs on our hillside. That's all I'm saying. I don't... I don't have a problem with the investment. I don't have a problem with advertising. I don't have a problem with any of it, but I think it would be irresponsible of us to say that that sign is okay when it goes against every part of what we have in place.
Can I respond to that?
We had a billboard put up out Belafonte's without any commissioner...
We don't have any control of that.
But that's...
State.
Well, but that's to my point is... Is it really a big deal if we're allowed... If the state allows somebody to put a billboard?
Well, we're the ones that make the decision.
Well, I'm just... I think...
Billboard? You talking about a billboard?
Yeah.
A state can approve any time they want, anywhere they want.
Right.
I hate billboards. I hate them, and Carson Elswick knows I hate them, but we're friends.
He's mentioned that too.
He's already made... I know. He's already made his living... Oh, he's already been to see me about reader board or something like that. And the truth of it is, state can say okay to him, and we can't say anything about it. He was courteous enough to come in and talk to me about it, and I'm not... Where it's already a sign there, he just wants to make it a reader board. No big deal. I'm... You know, I'm like Commissioner Perkins. We don't have... And I hear it all the time. I hear it from Brady. I hear it from everybody that's wanting to move people into our area, and that's... We're always talking about people and jobs and all that. I concur with Commissioner Clark there that we can't be just open the doors, you know, and everybody can do that. So we may need to address the ordinance to protect it in the future. You know, I don't think you were trying to do anything illegal.
Of course not.
But I don't... You know, it'd be much easier on us the next time around. We've...
Sure.
It's clear cut.
I understand.
But it's a temporary sign, and you're getting ready to go through the process.
That's correct.
And are you going to leave that sign up once you start selling some lots?
Once this... Who... No, probably not.
I mean, once you start... Or they got to have a bunch of houses already built, which I'm hoping happens for you.
Yes.
Is there... I mean, is that sign... When is that sign coming down then?
That's not... Whenever we start to actually develop, when we start construction up there.
Okay.
That's... The sign will come down then.
I'm not... I can't... I mean, I'm torn a little bit, but I can't be against it to try to provide housing that we don't have.
No, I can't either. I can't either. And I understand Mrs. Clark's concern.
I just don't want Ashland to look like Hollywood or Vegas. I just don't.
I understand that.
Well, it's just temporary.
My only point is that...
Temporary for how long?
It's temporary, but it's also an extremely isolated location. I can understand if someone's going to put up a 400-square-foot lighted sign right next to your house.
I think all that can be addressed when the ordinance is reviewed.
We could do that by ordinance, but also if you begin the process to plait that out, it's going to help us get a report back.
Sure.
How long it's going to be.
Well, the ordinance is pretty broad right now.
Yeah.
The recommendation of staff was negative, and this is basically an appeal. So if you want to put any conditions on your granting of appeal at this time, I think you could do, for instance, granting for a specific period of time would be within your framework as well.
I'd like to put a timeframe on it. I'm for it.
What's your timeframe?
I don't know. What's the consensus? Mr. Pollan, how long does it take to... This plait work to get, you know, to get it laid out in lots normally?
Well, most of that will be up to Mr. Watson and his engineers.
Yeah.
And how quickly they can get it sent to the city.
It also has to go before the planning commission, where they're... Everybody's...
I know you all work closely with other developers that are trying to do housing. Have you all been in discuss... Have you all talked to each other?
The first we heard about this was when we saw the sign on our code enforcement.
It may be beneficial for you to meet with Mr. Pollan.
I mean... Absolutely.
Yeah.
I will say, I mean, this development's been there. I've made several attempts to try and develop in the past. There was a... About a 400-square-foot sign that about 10 years ago when Bill Fisher was the city manager that sat on the edge of that cliff that was lighted at night.
I think I remember it.
That, you know, that's the only... Similar to what's... What they're now.
Right.
I do remember that one.
This one is higher elevation and...
What'd that one say, Patrick?
Lit at night. It said, "AshlandCliffside.com."
Oh, it did too.
This one... This one says, "Aclifside" because the letters are too... Where there's too many letters to put up there. So this is the abbreviated version.
I'd feel much better about this whole situation if we had gone... If we... If you had gone through the...
I understand.
Not the sign process I'm not worried about, but the process to get the property subdivided and actually ready for possible development.
Sure.
Does that make sense?
Well, I think that's normally what people do, developers. They do get it platted out and then put the signs up to sell the lot.
Right.
I'm no builder, but I'm thinking that happens.
And I totally understand why you would not want to go too far without having interest generated first. I mean, I know even with Brady, when they set up in South Shore, they didn't have everything set up there either, so they had to change the location based on issues that came up for them. I mean, when it's business, it's... You've got to go weigh your options financially.
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm for allowing it. I'm not going to vote against you, but I think we do have to look at this. When we craft this ordinance, there has to be a limit on the time.
I think that's fair.
Yeah.
So you get with our...
Okay.
Planning department, and as I said, you have to go back before the planning commission to figure out how you're going to do that.
You need a motion at this point to...
I'll make a motion that we grant them...
Temporary.
Temporary.
I second.
Approval for the sign.
Yeah, temporary approval for the sign.
You want to put a time limit on your motion?
Marty, you want a timeframe?
What, 60 days?
Well, we'll say 90 days, and we'll get back together.
So we'll make... So I'll make the motion that we have a approval for a temporary sign to be placed for... To 90 days.
Mr. Watson, I'm just curious. You're looking for a threshold on numbers that will then allow you to invest in the resources to do the plating, the investment that that would take? So you're looking for a number or something that...
I'm sorry.
On your hits on your site. You're looking for some type of result that will say, "Yeah, we should move forward with the plating."
Yeah, it's not really relative to the number of hits, but just relative to the interest that gets developed.
Similar to our recycling, how we put interest up there.
Yeah.
Correct.
90 days, okay? I second it.
Fair, Patrick. Then we get back together and talk about it.
Sure. That's great.
On favor?
We didn't have a second.
Wait. You had a motion and a second, but we needed... I want to... I have a discussion. I have a question. So at the end of 90 days, and I just want to make sure I'm okay with all of it, at the end of 90 days, if... Can we say at the end of 90 days if we're not... If we haven't gone through the process for subdivision, then we turn off the sign?
It should be plenty of time, should it? Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
To at least start the process. I don't... I do not believe that we would have an approved subdivision within 90 days, no, but to at least start the process and get us before the planning.
As is, at the end of 90 days, the sign would go off unless there'd been another application and another approval, either at the staff level or by you all.
I'm fine with that.
You okay?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
If I could mention one more, was this, we... This is a substantial sign. I set my...
It's massive.
My code enforcement officers up to look at it, and for us to... We first went up with the intention of removing it, which is what we're supposed to do by code, and our... My inspectors came back and said it would take us a week to take it down. There's structural elements to this sign that have not been reviewed. I mean, really, a sign of this size should have been submitted to our building inspector to review the plans beforehand. We can't guarantee its safety, and that's another concern I have with this city attorney warrant is, you know, if we allow this today without further review, it might be possibly just tabled until the next meeting, and we could go through that process with Mr. Watson. Just a suggestion.
Well... Because we... I mean, safety, you know, you throw safety in the game, that's number one, period, for everybody, or anybody at Midtown, for him, his staff, and so forth, but, well, then it needs to be inspected for safety and probably should do that in 10 days.
Yeah, we could certainly have a recommendation regarding the safety of the sign at the next meeting, but typically, a sign of this size with this sort of infrastructure attached to it, you know, this would have to go through a whole plan review process, and it wasn't.
Okay. Well, I think this, I think if you document the areas that need to be shored up or wherever they do, you need to get that information to Mr. Watson immediately.
We'll work with Mr. Watson through the whole process and try to... Obviously, your budget can be along with this.
And then you give us a report in our next meeting of what had to be done and so forth, and... Yeah, I mean, safety's first, so, no matter what.
Just one other data point on it. Mr. Pollan brings out a great point on the safety of it. Police Department, the Fire Department have both viewed this, and they don't see this as an issue. It doesn't hinder their operations. It's not a distraction to drivers, so just as a data point, we're all on that. Fire police are okay with it. Fire police are fine with it.
Motion to table the prior motion, so we can put this caveat in there.
So move.
One second.
On favor?
Aye. And a motion to pass the appeal to the next meeting, and we can see if it's been approved safely.
We'll look at it again.
Yeah, but we'll... Just so it's safe and all that.
Okay, so I understand. I mean, is tabled, the lights go back on now, or are they... Wait until it's tabled?
We've got a panel. I would just...
I don't... Nobody's going to see it if your light's not on.
Turn mine on.
Okay.
I'll be there to turn it on.
Okay.
I do, yeah.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wish you luck up there. I wish you great luck.
Any other new business?
We need to go executive session very briefly on a potential litigation matter. No vote will be taken, no action will be taken, only a discussion. I need a motion.
So move.
I second.
On favor?
Aye.
We are going to recess this meeting when we come back out. We will take no action in there. We come back out, we'll reset this meeting until tomorrow morning at 8:30 because we need to second read a couple of things. You know, no big deal or anything. And actually, Tamika, I don't know if you're interested, but we're going to head out to South Ashland Florists and Greenhouse. They're closing, I think, Monday, Sunday, Monday, the 28th, I think, but we're going to make a presentation to them if the paper would be... You did a front-page story on them the other day, and we all know them well and dealt with them for years and years. I had Donna in class, and anyway, we're going to make a little presentation out there. You may or may not be interested in, you know, following us out there. Thank you all for being here.